Good evening and welcome to the March 13, 2023 work session of Mayor and Council. Tonight, we have two discussion topics, the first being the intersection pedestrian safety study update, and the second being a presentation on the city's bus shelter advertising and maintenance services program. And I'm going to hand it over to Brian Fields from our Public Works Department to lead us in our first presentation.
Good evening, everybody. Brian Fields, Engineering Services Division Chief. The first item tonight is a follow-up to a discussion we had about the Great Seneca Pedestrian Bridge project back in November. And at that meeting, we were directed to go explore some options for some potential alternative pedestrian safety improvements, not just at the bridge intersection, but possibly at other locations throughout the city. So we retained Wallace Montgomery, who's one of our continuing transportation engineering consultants, to do a very detailed evaluation of eight major intersections in this city. Those eight were selected from an initial list of 30 intersections that our staff had put together based on the total number of crashes that were experienced of all types at those intersections. So we selected eight of the top 13 from that list, and we excluded intersections on 355, mainly because that road is undergoing a redesign in conjunction with the BRT project. So many of the pedestrian crossings there are already in the process of being completely redone. So they're going to review three of these, of those eight in detail tonight. It gets a little repetitious, but all eight are covered in your agenda packet. So if there's one you want to look at, we'd be glad to do that tonight. After they do the three, we'll kind of do a summary and compare the two projects a little bit, and we'll finish up talking about some next steps. So with that, I'll introduce John Rictanus and Vicky Yu from Wallace Montgomery.
Welcome.
Thank you very much for having us. So I'm John Rictanus. I'm with Wallace Montgomery. I'm the Vice President of their Traffic Engineering Department. Vicky Yu is one of my project managers. So first of all, thank you so much for having us here. Really excited about presenting to the Mayor and the Council about our findings for these intersection pedestrian safety studies. So with that, we'll go to our agenda. So what I want to do here is, like Brian said, there are eight intersection studies. So I want to briefly just show you the locations. Obviously, you know these pretty well, since you're from here. Going to sort of explain the process of how we evaluated these intersections. And then from there, we're going to go through each of the intersections. Again, we're going to focus on three of them. I have information for all eight of them for you. We're going to present three of them, just basically the analysis, some of our findings, and some of our initial recommendations for some safety improvements. Okay, so you can see here, this is the study location map. There are eight intersections of these. These are pretty major intersections. Most of them are owned by State Highway. They're main, a lot of the signals, most of them are signalized intersections. I would say seven of the eight of them are. And the signals are maintained by Montgomery County. I believe the Old Town at South Summit is the one city-maintained intersection just down the road from here. So the three that we're going to be focusing on are location one, which is Great Seneca Highway at Kentlands Boulevard, and number two, which is Great Seneca Highway at Quint Orchard Road. And these are the two we selected because these are right in between the, this proposed bridge that's being designed right now. And then we're going to jump down to the Mid-County Highway, number five, the Seabrook intersection. Again, a very good representative of a lot of these other intersections as far as what type of improvements we're thinking about. So I'm going to go to, so for now, I'm going to kind of explain you what sort of data we end up collecting, and from there, what we end up reviewing for these studies. So first, we collect a lot of data. Being a safety study, we obtained some crash data for each of these intersections. We obtained this the past five years. Got this from the Maryland State Highway Administration. They have a good database of information to grab that. Again, there's a lot of signals here. So we grabbed the signal plans and timings from Montgomery County. We reviewed a lot of these. We call it desktop review, using Google Earth, Google Maps, Aerials, and then you're able to kind of zoom into their, on the drive-by depictions. From the timings, we do look at both vehicular and pedestrian. We call it clearance times. So this is a real good safety feature. So for vehiculators, this is your amber, your all-red timings that you have out there. As well as for pedestrians, obviously, you have signalized pedestrians with the walk, the flash and don't walk, and the don't walk. So we kind of look at those, make sure those are adequate for, you know, for traversing through these intersections safely. Sight distances, obviously, your sight lines, both at the intersections, as well as looking, you know, approaching each of the intersections, no obstructions. We're looking at a lot of accessibility and walkability at these intersections. So ADA compliances, it's a big deal. So we got, we review all the ramps and the sidewalks and make sure obstructions are not issues, and everyone's able to kind of traverse through these pathways. Connectivity is a big deal. There's a lot of bus stops out there, so we've got to make sure people are adequately able to access these bus stops with the connectivity of these walkways. And even for bicycles, is there, are there bicycle facilities that they're able to utilize along these roads, whether it's on the street or on the walkways? We did review the pedestrian bike master plans, just to see if any of these intersections are part of these bike routes and pedestrian routes. From there, taking that data, we did go to the field. Luckily, this February, it's been actually unusually warm, so it was nice to be able to get out there and actually verify a lot of these, these geometric, these existing geometric features out there, the facilities, measure the ADA compliances, you know, verifying all these clearance intervals that I mentioned before, just to make sure that they're the same on these timing plans. Observing, you know, posted in some of the general travel speeds that we see out there for now. Conditions of, you know, is there lighting out there that's adequate? Are the conditions of the sign, the pavement markings, even the pavement, is it, are they in good or bad poor condition for people to walk around? Obviously, the traffic control, you have signals, you know, are the phasing of these, at these signals proper? Looking at where these bus stops and bus routes are located, make sure that everything's connected and it's safely to get to. Obviously, a lot of these pedestrian generators are the ones out there near these intersections. Is there connectivity to these generators for all the users? All right, next thing I'm going to do, go through each one of these intersections now. I'm going to kind of go through sort of the existing conditions and what we see out there. And then I've got some crash data to sort of show you, as well as kind of talk about some of the, our recommended initial conditions. We didn't do a lot of data analysis, I would say, you know, so we just kind of reviewed because we didn't have enough time. Just we reviewed some of the crash data and just more observations. So the first intersection, this is the intersection at Great Seneca, at Kentlands Boulevard, Orchard Ridge Drive. I believe the proposed bridge, pedestrian bridge, is just to the north of this intersection. So what we have out there, it's a signalized intersection. It's got a mast arm structures. They're mounted in the median. These phasing, so I'm going to call the phasing for the left turn, we went to the big, it's a thing that we look at. So there is, if I remember correctly, exclusive left turn phasing for left turners. What I mean by that is, they get the red arrow, right? So you're only allowed to turn left on a green arrow. You cannot turn anytime else. The side streets, the Kentlands and Orchard, definitely, that's permissive phasing. So they just have the green ball, right? So they can, they basically have to yield to traffic, but they can go once they deemed it's accessible to turn left. There are three marked crosswalks, as you can see up there. There is not one on, it's called the south side, but there's also sidewalks on all four corners. I believe the one in the northwest corner, this is a wider, more of an eight-foot wide walkway. It's a little more usable for more than just pedestrians. There aren't any bicycle facilities on the streets at all. There's some nominal, excuse me, shoulders out there, but not necessarily what we call deemed for bike lanes. The southeast corner is, has a channelized right turn. So that's one of the things we're going to kind of talk about, these channelized right turns, and how, what we could potentially do with these right, these channelized right turns for pedestrians. The lighting, there's lighting on most of the facilities. One, I would say, on the west side by Kentlands, there's some corridor lighting, but not necessarily lighting the intersection itself and some of the crosswalks well. There's something that we kind of noted out there. Anything else important?
Nothing.
Gotcha.
There's some sight distance.
Yeah, so this is one of the locations, especially on the approach, when you're on Kentlands, looking to the left, there's a lot, there's some, there's some obstructions of, you know, to it. You can kind of look at these pictures out there. The one on the right, the top, the top right there, there's some signs and a lot of vegetation that creates some obstructions of the sight distance. So it's one of those things where we're thinking that if maybe moving some signs, maybe cutting back some of the vegetation would help that sight distance. A little safer to negotiate through that intersection. So what you see here is the crash data, and this is police-reported crash data that was, that we were able to obtain from SHA. So at this intersection itself, there was 30 reported crashes. There were luckily no fatalities. There was one bicycle crash. It was along the eastbound Kentlands approach. Doesn't really give you a lot of information of what caused the crash at this point. It's something we can sort of look into later. There, most of the crashes out there were mainly rear-end collisions. So if you guys kind of see on the southbound Maryland 19 approach and the northbound, there's lots of rear-end collisions. So for us, obviously, we're going to look, when we see that, we want to kind of look at some of the clearance intervals for the vehicles to see if there's any issues, what's causing these. There were a few left turn crashes along the approaches at Kentlands and Ridge Drive as well. We did kind of coordinate with SHA, the District Three, to see if they had done any past studies at this intersection, just to see if they had some safety concerns as well. They did kind of look into this permissive phasing, and to see if it warrants different phasing, like more exclusive phasing than did not. So again, a couple other pictures here of some things. Obviously, on some of the islands, we saw a few places that had some, some areas potentially to repair the walkway, so it's a pretty easy fix. What's interesting on this middle picture, there's this pedestrian island. It's not necessarily at the intersection, but it's, let me point it to you. If you look on the right side off of Orchard Ridge Drive, there's this little driveway there, on the top right side. This is what I'm talking about. They've got, this is more about pedestrian hazard. You have got this kind of raised island, right, with this, with this walkway through it, but it doesn't align with the crosswalk. This creates a tripping hazard. So this is one of those things where we're thinking, okay, well, do you really need that out there? Maybe just remove that, make it a little safer to walk around. This picture kind of showing some of the proposed improvements we're thinking that we could do at this intersection. One of the things, another thing I wanted to point out, there are bus stops located out there. So there's one, and they're both on, I would call, the downstream side of the intersection, so past the intersection, along Great Seneca Highway. So that's, obviously, you want to make sure we're accessible to both these bus stops. This is important. One of the biggest things we're thinking is maybe having an additional crosswalk on the south leg would be great to have that. Make it easier to cross over to that bus stop on the southern side. On the east, the western side, potentially some better lighting at these crosswalks would be great to do, maybe add some more intersection-level light poles. Signal back plates, so there's a lot of rear-end crashes along the 119 approach. Back plates, while I'm talking about that, so you have your signal heads. One of the practices is have it sort of like a black border around the signal itself. It helps block a lot of the sunlight. That way, you can kind of more easily see that the signal heads itself. In turn, if you see that vehicle signal better, then you potentially could have more time to really focus on pedestrians crossing out there, too. The channelized right turn.
John, can I interrupt with a question on that?
Absolutely.
So is the theory there that this happens as the sun's going down, people are having glare, and they're not seeing the light change, and they're surprised when the person in front of them stops?
Yes, that, and just having just background stuff behind it in general. Glare is one of the biggest more issues.
It is bad in that area.
Yeah, I would think it probably is based on how it's oriented.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's standard practice for a lot of, for state highway and their signals. They start to put those a lot for that reason. That channelized right turn island on the southeast corner, one of the thoughts is to make it a little safer for pedestrians to cross. If you remove these islands, pinch those, I would call it the radii on the corners there, make it tighter radius, that way you don't need that channelized island. What's happening is, you're, right now, you have this uncontrolled crossing of the right turn lane, right? So these vehicles are coming at not full speed, but faster speed. They can't, they're supposed to stop for pedestrians, but if they don't see them, there's a better chance of collisions out there. So the thought is, force them to come to the intersection itself, make them stop before you turn right, right? That way, it's a little safer for the crossings. You will make a little longer crossing of that one leg for pedestrians, but we can certainly engineer that. So the idea is, consider doing something, this type of treatment out there, to make it a little safer. It is going to require some additional costs. You're going to have to relocate a lot of the signal structures and things like that. I mentioned the island to remove and the driveway. So something else we looked at were some of the signal timing, the clearance intervals. So the yellow and all red for vehicles, and some of the more flashing, don't walk, and don't walk. Looking at that, it seems like there is opportunity to add some more additional time to these intervals from, it'll make it a little safer for pedestrians to cross. Plus, it gives more time for vehicles to clear out of that intersection, so potentially less left turn accidents and rear ends.
Thank you, Mayor. One of the things that has always surprised me about this particular intersection is that there is no left arrow from Kentlands Boulevard going north on Great Seneca. And as somebody who lives that way, that is, you know, our exit route, as are many folks. So I'm not seeing that in here as far as a recommendation, but you're talking about the clearing, the amount of time to clear that intersection. Would that be something that, you're basically getting that queue because of either the pedestrian or the traffic coming from Orchard Ridge?
So, yeah, so for both those approaches, they, correct, they don't have the left turn arrows. They don't have an exclusive phase to turn there. You have to basically yield to any oncoming through traffic, right? This is one thing that the District Three looked at, to see if they, if it warrants. And these warrants, I try to determine when these are a good idea to install. It's based on your left turn volumes, your opposing through volumes, crash history. They did a study prior and basically said it did not warrant, you know, this exclusive phasing out there. So one thing that could be done is revisit that. We would need some additional data, like turning movement volumes, or updated volumes, to see if it's, if things have changed or not. There were some left turn crashes out there. So that's when I first.
And rear ending, and I'm wondering if it's because people are having to stop because they're not expecting.
The rear ending was along, there wasn't a, maybe like one or two along Kentlands, but it was mostly along the other directions, 119. So a lot of times, it's more abrupt stops, maybe there's some queuing that they didn't see from downstream. So, yeah, that's a lot of times. Again, that would require a little bit more data analysis, just really see what's causing a lot of these more congested-related type of issues. Answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Awesome.
While we're on that subject, I'll just offer, again, I don't know if the data supports it or not, but anecdotally, there's a similar issue coming off of Orchard Ridge Drive and turning left to go south on Great Seneca Highway. There's no left turn arrow there either. You know, if it's the will of the council, I think I would join Councilmember Rick Nolte in supporting, maybe relooking at those warrants for both of those.
Yeah, when I first looked at this crash data, it was one of the first things that popped in my mind. Okay, did they look at this? And maybe the one that the District looked at was fairly old. Obviously, volumes have changed quite a bit recently, so it's definitely worthwhile looking into.
I will also point out that the damage that you're mentioning to that pedestrian walkway has been there for several years. As a cyclist, I have to navigate that coming through there.
Okay, yeah, I'm sure that's.
So I'm extremely familiar with this intersection since I live in the neighborhood.
Oh, awesome.
So first of all, I'm not sure you're aware of it, but some years back, the intersection was actually re-engineered because of a fatal pedestrian incident. Somebody crossing from Kentlands, the Kentland side to Orchard Ridge in that crosswalk. A car making a left turn saw him, stopped, and the person behind went around and... So they actually re-engineered the Orchard Ridge side to improve the sight lines a little bit. I'm not sure exactly what was done, but this is probably going back 10 years, give or take at this point. So I'm sure you don't have that data. Also, coming, I often commute out Kentlands Boulevard, make a right turn going south on Great Seneca into that, into that lane that's dedicated to merging into traffic. That lane is probably why there's no crosswalk there. I'm not a traffic engineer, so I'm just speculating. Not that many of the cars leaving my neighborhood know that they can go make a right turn even when there's traffic coming so they can merge in, but I think that's what that's for, and that's probably a complicating factor.
It 100% is. That's a very good observation. A lot of times, depending on how much pedestrian traffic out there, for a mainline crossing, they'll try to keep just one cross, and you'll put it on the side that has less right-turning traffic. Obviously, that's sort of a conflict point that it creates. So it's just interesting, because the next intersection up there at 124, they do have crosswalks on both sides. So one of the thoughts was, is, well, if you're going to put a pedestrian bridge out here, would having two here be, I don't know if it's enough, but at least would help accommodate it? But it definitely, it definitely complicates the thing when you have a higher right turn traffic there.
Lisa.
Thank you. It may be too soon for this question, but you stated that this intersection was selected, one that was selected because of the proximity to the potential bridge. With 30 crashes, how does that rate in terms of, are there sites that, I just want to get a basis of, are we talking about, you know, this is small, maybe more large in terms of number of crashes?
We're going to get to that, right? Brian, we're getting to that sort of summary data, right?
It's relatively high, but not the highest, is the short answer. We'll cover that in our wrap-up here.
Okay. All right. I thought it may be too soon.
Go right ahead.
Awesome. So, okay, so that's, yeah, this is good questions here, and I can kind of see, based on our proposed improvements, roughly about the cost, what we're thinking to do all of these, how much it's going to be for this intersection. I'm going to move on to the second intersection. Again, this is further north. This is the one I mentioned at Quint Orchard Road. This is also a signalized intersection. It's actually a strain wire system. So this is the ones where you got the strain wire holding the signals up, kind of looks a little like they're floating in the air. More modern standard practices try to get away from these type of intersections. They're kind of expensive to reconstruct. But you do, because with the mast arms, you are able to see the signals themselves a little better, not kind of floating in the air. At this intersection, the left turn phase, and this is all exclusive left turns, every single one of those left turn approaches does have an arrow for that figuring. They do have bus stops on the north side. They're both, the southbound Great Seneca is actually on the upstream side of the intersection, then the other side's downstream. What's interesting is here, is those, the bus stop on the southbound side, is you have sidewalk that goes to it from this intersection, but there's nothing that extends beyond that, so going up to the adjacent intersection. Some of our observations out there, just looking at our pictures, you see the one on the left here. So this is, this is that looking door at the southbound side. We call it goat path. So there's obviously a pathway that people are actually walking to get down this roadway, potentially to get to this bus stop. So one of the thoughts is, this is probably a good connectivity improvement here to potentially maybe extend that sidewalk in this particular location. They, it's a similar situation where you have channelized right turn lanes, the same as the other intersection. There aren't any marked bike facilities out here. There are some wider sidewalks on, I would say, the northbound side, so that can accommodate bicycles off the street. One of the things here is the types of crosswalk markings. So at the other intersection, they had these more, they were hatched, we call them continental style, or some people call them zebras, or piano keys. So you've got like the thicker sort of latitude type of markings. These are higher visibility, much better for pedestrians to see, and vehicles to see pedestrian crossings. This is a little bit older, and we call more longitudinal markings. It's standard practice now, I know for the city and even for the state, is to actually install these more updated, higher visibility type of continental style markings. Definitely a good candidate for that here. Lighting is okay here. It's a pretty big intersection. There was some lack of lighting, I would say, in the northwest and southeast corners. So it's something to consider, have a little bit better lighting. Again, crossings at pedestrians at night, lighting is really important. I think that's it. So going through the crash summaries, same thing, this had 31 total crashes, pretty similar to the other one. Luckily, there wasn't any fatal crashes, this is, you know, last five years. There were three bicycle crashes along this route. So clearly, there's bicycles in this area, so usually utilizing these facilities. There's one on the southbound, one on the eastbound, and one on the westbound approaches. And I don't know for sure the details of what happened and why they crashed. This area is near, based on the bicycle master plan, it was not necessarily part of the planned routes, actually, doesn't need bike routes, but it's nearby them. Predominant crashes out here, it's mainly rear ends. This is something we saw somewhere at the other intersection, too, along the southbound Great Seneca, as well as the westbound. Not as many angles, but again, you have that exclusive left turn phasing, so you don't see as too much. But the thought here is, maybe some additional clearance timing on the vehicles would help that, help improve, mitigate some of those crashes. Okay, a couple other things we noticed out here. I mentioned the crosswalks, the types. There are a lot of breaks, median breaks for pedestrian crossings. One of the more standard practices now to make sure these openings we're creating are a little wider, you know, they kind of are matched closer to what the actual width of the crosswalk. Plus, making sure you're not creating tripping hazard. Plus, making sure you're not creating tripping hazards. Maybe you have more of a flare, gradual flare on the corners of these median openings. That was one of the big things that we saw out there. Pretty easy, simple solutions. Okay, some of the solutions, we came up here, mentioned upgrading some lighting, some more intersection lighting out there, upgrade to crosswalks. Not too sure the feasibility, but looking into, would bike lanes make sense along this corridor itself? Again, that's more of a planning endeavor. There's some sidewalks that just need to be fixed. Again, the channelization islands, maybe consider removing those and make it a little safer for the crossings. And obviously, I also mentioned that extending that sidewalk on the north side up to the, is it Sulane? Can I pronounce it? Another consideration I didn't mention in here, but you know, it's really expensive to do, but is, you know, maybe reconstructing the signal itself into more of a mast arms system. Any questions about this intersection?
Some of those solutions would be S H A's projects and not ours.
Yeah, correct. We broke that out in a later slide we get to, but you're right. Most of these are county or state responsibility items.
They are, exactly.
It's interesting that you bring up bike lanes here because Quince Orchard, south of here, has a bike lane up until you get to Kentlands Boulevard, and then it disappears. And then you have that extra lane which you end up riding in if you're not up on the sidewalk. And then once you cross it, you have, like you mentioned, the wider sidewalk, which then turns into that NIST pass upstream. So that would be interesting to, if no other reason, there's, or let me say that better. Something that could be considered is, when you're in that bike lane, there is nothing that channelizes you onto a sidewalk.
Sure.
So that might be something through this transition that could be helpful.
Absolutely. It's probably more of a corridor wide thing to look at, not just like this intersection to really, having that connectivity of what's existing bike facilities onto and whether extending it or making sure you're transitioning it often in a safe manner, like onto like a sidewalk, wide sidewalk. No, good stuff. Okay, so that's the second intersection. I'm going to jump to the fifth intersection. All right, and so this one, this is Mid County Highway at Sabrook Oaks Boulevard. Again, that are state-owned. County maintains signal. This one's mast arms. I believe this one has, phasing is all. All exclusive left turn phasing. So again, all of them have your turn arrows, which makes it safer. Similar features, you've got some channelized right turns, and actually, large sweeping ones on this one, on the west side. You've got some pedestrian crossings along these channelized islands. One's kind of has this awkward skew that's sort of parallel to Mid County highways. Typically, you kind of try to make those more perpendicular to the crossing, make them shorter. There are bus stops here as well. They are connected. Got an interesting one that the bus stop's actually located in the island. Typically, I can kind of see why they did it, they put it there. I mean, the ideal is to put it on the downstream side, but you've got this channelized with this XL lane. So it's kind of tough to actually get your bus to be located there. This one doesn't have full sidewalk everywhere. Basically, along Longwood Field and Sabrook, you've got five-foot sidewalks. Don't have any eight-foot sidewalks out there. You've got the one mainline crossing. They don't have the continental style crosswalk markings either. I think those are the major ones there. I think the lighting was fine there. So this one, turning to the crash data, thirty-four total crashes reported. This one did have two fatals. In 2021, there was a left turn crash with the westbound Sabrook with the eastbound through, westbound left turn at night. There's also a fixed object collision. Someone ran off the road into the curb, potentially at higher speeds during wet conditions. This was in 2020. Didn't really have enough other type of information on these details to really kind of get into it.
I can fill you in on the one. The 2021, there was an individual was charged with drunk driving. And the driver was coming southbound on North one twenty-four, if that makes sense. And hit somebody making a left-hand turn into the neighborhood. And I have some questions about this, but continue.
Okay, gotcha. Sure. And there wasn't any, at least reported pedestrian bike crashes at this location. There were a lot of rear ends, namely the Woodfield approach. There were quite a few left turn crashes as well along this, I would call it the Woodfield and the Sabrook intersections, which is interesting being that it's actually exclusive left turns. I'm wondering if maybe more recently they made them that or not. They, I think, but being no pedestrian bikes accidents, there wasn't, couldn't figure out anything else really worthwhile looking into, other than maybe, as I mentioned before, looking at clearance intervals. This is the big thing, is looking at clearance intervals, make sure you have enough time to clear these intersections.
So, if I may, Mr. Mayor? So this is two blocks from my house.
Oh, wow.
And I've heard some of the crashes from my house. And our neighborhood, before I was even elected, this has been a challenge for the city, for state highway. And this intersection was changed in the past five years by state highway.
It was, okay.
So some of the phasing was adjusted. You used to be able to turn on a solid green light. They would, you know, you'd have the arrow and then it would linger.
The little fire head?
Yeah, exactly. But they would, southbound, they made it a two-lane left turn and they added, it used to be there was a, basically a blank lane so that you could have visibility to make that turn.
Sure, sure.
They did away with that. And then coming northbound, you used to be able to make that turn in. One of the things that I've been talking to with Brian and with Tony, particularly in light of the drunk driver, the suspected drunk driver. It's a long shot coming down Mid County Highway, coming from the bend and then coming straight down. And we have cars racing and all of that on this road. But when you come up and over a hill and then you come back down when you get to Shitty Grove, there is a flashing light that warns you that there's a red signal coming up ahead.
Sure, probably because there is a site distance issues.
Exactly. And one of the things that we've discussed for this particular intersection is, is there additional signaling that needs to be added upstream? Or a beacon with the red, something that, you know, alerts somebody who's maybe not paying as much attention as they should? Because you're right, with the changes that were made, like there used to be a crosswalk on the northwest side of this intersection. That used to go across. They've removed that. The pedestrian crossing on the northeast side was moved closer to Mid County Highway. It used to be in the middle of the bend. People coming around would not see somebody. So that was an attempt to make that better.
Sure.
So there have been changes here. I don't know if I would go as far as call them improvements, because we've still had two fatal crashes since these changes were done. There were five or six crashes, like bad crashes, I don't know if they were fatal, prior to the change that was made here. So this has definitely been an area that, you know, has been on my radar. Like I said from before, I was on the council and, you know, obviously, this is the one where we're seeing fatal crashes and obviously, something needs to be done here.
Clearly, there are some speeds issues too. A lot of times when you have fatals, it's because you have higher speeds happening too. So it's definitely something to look into.
Just an update on that. S H A is doing a study of this, and we expect to have those results in about a month. We still felt it was important to have them kind of take, give it a fresh look, look at it from, as our consultant, and come up with, you know, independent safety review and recommendations, so.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Mayor.
Absolutely. And some of the thoughts here, you know, removing these channelized right turn islands would be a great candidate here. A lot of times when you have these pedestrian crossings at the islands, having some more pedestrian warning signs at them, that way the vehicles that can physically see the crossings helps as well. I don't remember, call seen that at these intersections. This is one of our recommendations. So yeah, and obviously, better marked crossings, continental style will help. These are little things, and obviously, the clearance intervals would help a little bit, so. A little bit. So it would be interesting to see what state highway comes up with as well, so. Some other pictures we see out there, just mentioning, just conditions of some of the walkways are a little dated, they just need some fixing. Some wider median openings would be nice out there as well. Mentioned some of the clearance timings, the removing of the channelized right turns, maybe redesigning that crosswalk. I'm glad to hear that that's the reason why they did it. It's just a little awkward at that eastern corner. I think that's pretty much it that you can do here. Oh, the back plates again, when you see a lot of rear end crashes, better visual, be able to see that the signal has is a big help out there too, so. So that, with that, that actually concludes the three landings I'm focusing on. I'm going to have Brian.
Oh, can I just add one thing in here?
Sure, I'm sorry.
So for the, let me see, the road called Sabrook Oaks Boulevard and District Three and recommend the right turn only sign to be installed at this approach.
Oh, that's right.
And it will be installed shortly. It's not on the, at the intersection yet.
There'll be additional signing out there on the signal for that. Yes, thank you. All right. Find your slide.
Again, dated eight intersections. That's just a brief overview of the three. So the big picture here is that there are improvements that can be made at these intersections. They're feasible, they're fairly affordable. Most of those would require approval and potential funding from state or the county. This kind of breaks that out. As you can see, of the eight intersections, there's about 1.17 million dollars of improvements. Over a million of that would be state or county responsibility, and only, you know, 118,000 would be city. Now, the city could fund those improvements. I'm not recommending that, that would be a policy change. One item to consider long term would be to look for grant opportunities to put towards some of these improvements if the state or county are just going to put these on the back burner. Because these are where we have the greatest pedestrian risks are on the state and county intersections. So the hard part is, kind of getting back to Great Seneca, is measuring the amount of improvements that can be made here. I think we can say for sure that what can be done is, these intersections can be brought up to standards, and in doing so, improve safety. Measuring the safety is very difficult, but improvements can be made. So, go to the next slide. So looking from a cost standpoint, comparing intersection improvements to the bridge, this is a very basic comparison of what you see here. Clearly, the intersection improvements offer a better investment in terms of providing more safety improvements for a lower cost, both initially and over the long term. The bridge elevates the pedestrian and provides complete safety at one crossing, so that's great. There are other aspects of the bridge, you know, it's a recreational amenity. It connects neighborhoods. It provides a link in our bicycle network that we talked about before that these pedestrian improvement projects don't address. So it's really hard to compare the two projects, you know, like to do everything. But just to kind of give you an idea of the cost, you know, the bridge is four million, design's 500,000. All eight of these intersections, we feel like we can handle for just over a million dollars. So that's, you know, it's a lot of return for the money to go to these types of improvements. Finally, your next steps here as far as where we're at in the process. Bridge is going towards seventy-five percent design. That'll be complete in May. We'll be speaking with Astra Seneca and then bringing that back to council at a short time after that. For these projects, we're going to do some additional analyses, possibly look at some additional locations. We will be submitting our recommendations to the county and state for their information and review to carry that forward. But I think we'll stop there. We've covered a lot of ground. We'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you all for the presentation. I feel like this was a very healthy exercise to, you know, since our previous presentation on the bridge project itself, to sort of look at the alternatives and opportunity costs. You know, the bridge has been sort of a direction that we've been taking for a long time. And I, if we were to diverge from that path and say, instead, let's spend a quarter of the money and do more with it, it still doesn't make it an easy decision because, you know, the bridge has sort of been part of our direction for a long time. But it doesn't mean it's the right one. And I'm a little torn, even though it does, from a fiscal standpoint, and we do have a great tradition in this city of being fiscally responsible. It seems pretty clear, if we're looking at an either-or situation, it seems pretty clear. But like you, Brian, ideally, let's just do everything. And I see Tanisha sort of grimaced.
I'm not sure if that's what Brian said.
So anyway, I'm going to turn it over to council members. I see Jim Rarin to go. Go ahead, Jim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did want to ask if we could talk a little bit about intersection four at Old Town Avenue and South Summit? Because that is a pain point, not necessarily because of pedestrian crashes per se, but just it's a challenging intersection in general. Did you, or did you or could you include looking at whether a traffic light here in connection with Summit and Diamond would be helpful to all parties?
Definitely considered, yes.
Yeah, yes. They're looking at current pedestrian safety. We have a warrant analysis and a safety study, separate study, that's just starting now. Different consultant that is going to look at exactly that, really looking at the whole corridor from Diamond and Summit through the railroad and pedestrian safety, and then the possible, what can be done at the Summit-Old Town intersection.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, looking at the crash data, this is just a glimpse of it right here. See a lot of the side streets, stop controls, angle collisions. When I see something like that, it almost, it kind of is like, okay, a signal would probably help there. So I would see you do your due diligence and do an actual analysis.
Great, thank you.
Ryan?
I just want to ask a quick follow-up to that before we switch to another question. Does that other study look at, I mean, I know it's kind of pie in the sky, I get it. Does it look at what types of very large infrastructure changes to the railroad crossing might affect pedestrian safety and traffic flow there, like, you know, maybe an underpass or whatever? You know, I know it's pie in the sky, pie day tomorrow, so.
That's right.
Does it consider that and at least think about that as an alternative? Notwithstanding that the cost is going to be humongous if we were to ever even consider doing something like that, plus all the regulatory hurdles?
I think it's going to identify the deficiencies and make suggestions to consider. It's not going to really look at feasibility of underpass, overpass, but it'll say, this is a problem, these are your options to address it.
Okay.
About ninety days before we get that study back.
Got it. Thanks.
Lisa, and whoa, I'm saying to Jim and to Ryan. We're going to have to sort of get into, I don't think we have to make a final decision, but I think we should give staff some direction tonight about where we think we might go. Lisa, you go ahead.
Thank you. This is great information and the focus on pedestrian safety. If you package this up and with Vision Zero on the county side, are they eager to play? If you package this up and with Vision Zero on the county side, are they eager to play? What's the probability that they're going to take this data and it's useful and we'll see this as part of the plan, particularly with the focus on pedestrian safety?
As far as state and county, just being responsive to our requests and identifying needs, I have not seen that level of responsiveness that we would have liked to, we would like to see at other locations. Watkins Mill, we have at Clopper, you know, we've got an issue there, we've identified it, so I think short answer is no, they have not been responsive, I would not expect them to step up and fund some of these. We have seen some projects they've worked with us on, like 355 at Walker, that was one where we did a study like this and we had to fund the improvements.
Okay.
So probably if we're willing to fund things, we could accelerate them, but waiting for them, I think would be very frustrating potentially.
To add to Brian's response, I would say one of the things I've encouraged staff to do, which is part of what you're seeing tonight, is so that we are coming to them with more data and not just, because oftentimes we get into these discussions with our county and state folks, because there's a complaint that's come in from a resident or several residents and then we are trying to engage them in that complaint and then we wait for them to do the study, which sometimes they do, sometimes they do not. So we want to try and get in the driver's seat a bit more and have data that we bring to the table that should resonate with vision policy, Vision Zero policies and other policies that SHA may take, right? So we want, we want to be able to speak the same language, have data to support our requests and in some cases, you know, we may have to take action where we feel it's just the last resort, but we're trying to have better conversations with them, at least in what we can control.
Thank you, this is packaged nicely to do that, thanks.
So you had asked specifically about the Great Seneca, Kentlands Orchard Bridge intersection and where that ranked, I believe, in the list of total crashes?
Or the opposite, actually, what, are at least the top three on here?
Sure, we can pull up, it's in the appendix here, if you can go to that.
Oh, yeah.
So, you know.
There it is.
So this is the overall list of 30 that we put together as staff and the Great Seneca at Quince Orchard is.
I'm sorry, Great Seneca, Quince Orchard is the ninth.
Yes, it was ninth as far as, that's total crashes, can be a little misleading because we really want to look at crash rates, you know, total volume, total crashes versus the volume to really look at what's unsafe. We just did, and that's really hard to get that level of data, this is just total number of crashes in a five-year period, this was ninth, this intersection was. The number one by far was 355 at Quince Orchard, it's, you know, huge intersection, and then the eight we selected are, and within those top 13.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you, Lisa, we'll go to Neil.
So first of all, I think this is great work and we want to do whatever we can to make it safer for people to get around to whether they're driving or riding a bike or on foot. So I think we definitely want to take it as an action by the city to try to get this done and hopefully get someone else to do it and pay for it, but whatever it takes. You know, in terms of the comparison between the bridge and the intersection, I think we're not, it's not exactly apples and oranges, but it's more apples and pears, in that the idea of the pedestrian bridge, as Brian alluded to, is connectivity as much as safety, is that if you could build bridges at all these intersections, if we could afford to do that, that would be much safer than any alternative. And the reason that, my understanding and talking to the folks from Astra Zenica, the reason they proposed this is they wanted to encourage connectivity between their campus and the neighborhood surrounding them and the Kentlands, Lakelands neighborhood and the shops and amenities there. So, I mean, I have to think that the volume of pedestrian and bicycles crossing that intersection today is relatively small compared to its potential because of the perception. And as someone who has crossed that on bicycle, I haven't crossed it on foot because it is a little too frightening and I don't really have a reason to cross it on foot, but that is one of the intersections and one of the kind of gaps in the bicycle network that was identified by the Transportation Committee some years ago when we're looking at ways to get around the city. So I think that the intersection improvements that you outlined are great, but I'm not sure that they're enough to really encourage that level of, you know, increased traffic compared to what a bridge would do.
Lynn?
I just want to, one reminder before you get into any discussion is that we do have a binding annexation agreement as well as funding agreement with Astra Zenica or with Metamune regarding the pedestrian bridge, so any change in approach would require renegotiation of those agreements with Metamune.
Yeah. Ryan just pointed out to me that the, our packet doesn't necessarily, like the cover page doesn't say you guys are seeking specific guidance tonight, it says input. And I think maybe we should have a little time to digest before we give sort of guidance on a direction here, what do you think? What was your goal, Tanisha?
I concur with that direction, I think we wanted to come back with a response to some of the questions we got at the last session, and so that's what this is.
It's been a marvelous job doing that, actually.
If you feel you need to chew on it a little more, you know, I think we're approaching 75%, there'll be another presentation, I'm guessing, in the June timeframe, and so it might make sense to make a decision before we complete design.
Yeah.
We'll continue to spend money on the design.
Understood. Council members, I'm sure you guys just got the message there. Okay, well, Councilmember Wu isn't here, his, he had to take his daughter to see a doctor and he is, he is watching remotely and I'm not going to call on him unless he puts his, unless he puts his hand up here, but I will, I will take this opportunity, we do have someone else in the, in the room on Zoom, I'm not seeing anybody here who would testify, but if you would like, if you're on Zoom and would like to testify here on this matter, just use the Zoom raise hand function and I will call on you. Going once, going twice, okay, no hands have gone up, so thank you guys very much for a very thorough presentation and you've given us a lot of really good recommendations and we appreciate it.
My pleasure, appreciate it.
All right, so next.
Let me get your.
And Brian, you are leading us on the next one as well.
Quick shift change.
Yeah, yeah, take your time, take your time.
All right. Mr. Mayor, while we're doing the shift change here, what would, since we're in public session here and hearing Tanisha's urging to make a decision before we kind of get into that, you know, completion of design, do we need to bring it back into an agenda item and then have another discussion to provide that guidance?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we could do it under staff guidance or we could do it under a presentation, we can get it onto an agenda.
And certainly if there are specific questions that mayor council members have in the interim, you know, we encourage you to reach out to us so that we can address those for you.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Okay, Brian, take it away.
Next item, this is brief, five slides, this is our bus shelter program update. So bus service in the city, of course, is provided by RideOn through Montgomery County Transit Services. The city owns and maintains 57 bus shelters, 48 of those have advertising on them. We also empty trash at about 125 bus stops that do not have shelters. Our bus shelter contract format historically has been fairly simple, the contractor gets advertising rights at the shelters in exchange for providing maintenance and repair services and then the city also gets a small revenue share from the advertising receipts. So the current contract has been with us for 20 years and since 2013, that contract has been on a month-to-month basis, so it's really overdue for putting it back out for proposal. We did that last year, we went through the selection process and we selected a firm by the name of Fuel Media Holdings to be our new bus shelter contractor and we are currently in negotiations with Fuel. We've worked out all the terms of the contract and we expect that to be executed within the next 30 days or so. So some of the highlights of that new contract, the arrangement is very similar to what we've had historically with some important updates that I'll go over. It includes an initial bus shelter repair task. If you drive around town or walk or bike, you see some bus shelters that just look like they need repairs, you're right, they do. This task will just initially go around and perform those repairs, really that the current contractor should have performed, but they just really fell off in their responsiveness. It includes the standard services, trash pickup at the shelters and stops, cleaning, repairs, snow removal, if we ever get snow again. The, includes bus shelter advertisements at the 48 shelters, they have to be reputable character. In the new contract, 10% are reserved for city programming, that's an increase from what was 5% in the current contract, so we get a little more as for our special events, programs, things like that. The revenue share in the new contract will be 22%, it's an increase from what was 10% in the current contract. It includes pricing for newer replacement shelters and it's about $18,000 for a brand-new bus shelter. It's a 10-year contract, we can renew for two, five-year terms, so if all goes well, we could potentially have this company for the next 20 years. So some discussion items, we'd like to have your input on tonight, I'll show you some pictures here in a moment, our bus shelter design options. We've had, I'll go to the next slide here, the, this is a standard Gaithersburg shelter with the green, some folks like it, some not so much. The green does tend to fade over time, so we've had, you know, trouble keeping that looking sharp, so we could stick with this as our Gaithersburg standard and there'd be no problem doing so. One option is to go to what is currently the Montgomery County standard, which would match it up with new shelters going on, the county has 500 shelters. So this is, what you see here are slight variations on their current standard, so we could switch to that at some point. Pricing is about the same, so that would be our option. I think we would lean as staff to perhaps recommend going to this design, but branding it in a way without adding a lot of cost to identify it as Gaithersburgs, but we can really do any of those options, so I wanted to bring that up, open it for discussion tonight about bus shelter design. I've got just a couple other items before I wrap up, but I'll stop there for that item.
Okay, I mean, staff recommendation is county standard with Gaithersburg branding, I don't have any particular problem with that, that seems fine to me. Jim?
I, I just think if you make that change without public input, you're, we're going to hear something. I just, for some reason, there's just something that says, people don't like change, it's a unique thing to Gaithersburg and you start making those changes and I could see some people, for whatever reason, being upset. It is a Gaithersburg brand, if the, if the cost is about the same, I mean, we'd end up having to switch everything out eventually, you'd have a mismatch over time, I'd just as soon keep the current look.
Okay. Ryan?
Yeah, I mean, I guess my gut reaction was that, oh, you know, are our bus stops iconic looking, but you know, the more I think about it, I mean, as much as I sort of like the distinction that we have brand-wise from the county, I don't know that it's so important to keep it if there are practical reasons. The question is, what are the practical reasons? You know, as Jim said, if it's the same cost. If there are some other reasons like the functionality of the design that the county uses is better, or there's more covered space for bus riders, or it's easier to maintain for whatever reason, I think that would make it an easier call. I don't know if you have any thoughts on that right now, but that's something that I'd be interested in knowing. I'd say slightly, the counties would be slightly easier to maintain. The white kind of plasticky-looking components that you see here just tend to really get dirty over time, they're hard to clean and they do tend to get brittle, I don't know if that's just from sun exposure over time and then the paint tends to fade and chip a little bit on it. We can keep up with this as our standard, though. The county standard, one other functional advantage is the canopy is slightly wider, longer, so you get a little bit more coverage underneath, you know, roof protection essentially than you would with our shelter, it's about a foot or so, depending on the model. So slight lean for maintenance to the county, but we can handle it either way. Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't have a strong objection to switching over as long as we've come up with a creative way to continue to brand them nicely as city shelters, but I think Jim is right, it's probably worth making sure that we get the public, you know, to know that they have a chance to weigh in, I mean, I guess you could argue that tonight is the public's chance to weigh in, but we haven't exactly been like sort of pushing hard to make sure that the public knows that before making any big decision. But, you know, I mean, in terms of the cost savings and the reasonableness of, you know, proposed 10-year contract, all that makes sense to me.
Lisa?
Thank you. Is, Brian, is there no economy of scales if we buy off of the county contract since they've got more bus stations?
Haven't looked into that, potentially.
Okay.
Check out.
Okay, thanks.
Neil, anything?
No, I'm just kind of trying to look at this and see what could be done. Looking at the county design, you've got some very significant room for branding on the back of the shelter, at least in the upper-left corner of the county page. So, you know, rather than have a little bit of branding on the top, having the whole back of the shelter be city branding, I think is powerful, so I think it's, you know, just a step into the slightly more modern look, which I have no issue with, but I agree with the idea of, you know, floating this past the public and see if there's any significant objections, you know, not cutting down streams or rerouting, rerouting or cutting down trees or rerouting springs, probably less of an issue for changing the bus stops, but you never know.
True, you never know. Jim?
So as a practical matter, if we were to decide that we wanted to switch, would we, would we actively go and swap out all of what we have or is it more of a function of as it needs to be replaced, we'd be?
Probably the latter.
Okay.
We did apply for a federal grant with the county that would have replaced two-thirds of our shelters, unfortunately, we didn't get that last year, so we held this actually as RFP until we had the outcome of that grant, would probably be kind of one by one, either we're adding new shelters or replacing existing.
Okay, and then to that end, through this contract, would we be replacing the bus shelter that was damaged and eventually removed over by the youth center?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
So we could also go back to the sources of grant money and try again, right?
It's a federal program, if not that one, there's other ones that come along and these are good candidates, there's a lot of grant money being pushed into transit services now, so we're always on the lookout for those.
Mayor, can I ask?
Yeah, please, go ahead.
So one question for Brian and one for you all, lower left on the county stand, county standard sign, not, as Neil mentioned, sort of more opportunity for city branding, but given that in the new contract, we've negotiated a higher revenue share, it appears to me that the county shelters give us more high-visibility advertising options for those seeking to place ads on, and so perhaps increasing our revenue or am I?
Potentially, there's more square footage, square footage of revenue, or ad space, that's correct.
And then just for, if there, I hear two that encourage maybe more, more public input or sort of consulting with the public, any ideas for that?
Well, I think we should just, we should put it on to, we can put it on staff guidance or we can put it into a presentation in an upcoming meeting, just so it's an, it's an agenda item and people can see it. Not that they couldn't have seen this, but you know, just, it just added to a regular meeting. I got, just got a text from Councilmember Wu, who says he's generally fine with the staff recommendation too, but also agrees, you know, let's, let's put it on an agenda at a meeting and let the public have a chance to see it one more time.
Okay, just wanted to make sure I was on the same page there, thank you.
I mean, I would even say, I don't know, you know, just a little bit of social media outreach, informal survey, you know, I don't know, I don't know if we want to do, be that proactive, but, you know.
Some, you know, maybe some social media, but, yeah, okay. Okay, everyone good? Any questions? Okay. And I'm just going to look on Zoom and see, I just got it. Rob also wants to suggest that we do a shelter arts program like we did for the storm drains. Okay, well, you know, we can get into that later, but thank you, Rob. I'm not seeing anybody either here or on Zoom with, who want to testify. So, I feel like we're generally headed toward the staff recommendation, but we will just put it on one more agenda and, you know, give the public another chance to say something. Put, give us their input.
Understood.
All right. Anything else from staff? Tanisha? You look like you're holding something back here.
I do. No, nothing for me, your honor, thank you.
Are there other discussion items on this presentation that we're supposed to talk about?
Oh, yeah, wasn't there, did we, we didn't finish this, did we?
Just, I was going to mention that, you know, looking at future expansion, you know, do we want to take either revenue share or future funds to put into more bus shelters? And then, just when we look at bus service here, there's a lot of changes coming. There's RideOn Reimagine, there's the 355 BRT, there's other initiatives like the Great Seneca Transit Network. These are going to change the routes, the station, stop locations, how people use bus service here. So, our program needs, we're very much aware of this. We need to adapt and adjust our, our bus shelter program to the services being provided. That's more of a long-term item, so, that's it.
Okay, thank you very much, Brian. I'm not seeing any other questions. So, I will note that the next regular meeting of the mayor council is next Monday, March 20th. And until next time, let's do great things, Gaithersburg, we are adjourned.